Item number 13 is final financial report for fiscal year ending June 30, 2013. Diane, thank you. Robin?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. You have me for two reports in a row, so I brought both of them up here with me.
They're both very exciting, right? They're not duplicate one of the other, right?
They're different. One is the audit report, and you'll hear from me first, and then the city's independent auditor. First, I'm going to be talking to you tonight about the city's general fund and providing you a summary schedules of how we ended the fiscal year for fiscal year 1213, including all of the results that went into the city's audit and then were subsequently audited. There were no changes that were made to these numbers based upon the city's audit. And after going through the general fund with you, then I will go through on a summary level both the water and wastewater enterprise funds with you. And please, as always, stop me along the way if you have questions. This is a summary of the general fund budget versus actual at the highest level, including the beginning general fund balance as of July 1, 2012, total revenues and total expenditures for the year, and the fund balance remaining at the end of the year. It's represented in thousands. So, for example, when you look at the final budget for revenues, we had budgeted $32,000, $32,962,000, and the actual results were $34,026,000 received. I'm going to focus on the budget for the expenditures because we obviously are upside down when you look at the budgeted amount, but we ended the year much better than that. The original adopted budget included expenditures of $34.3 million, and to that we added an additional $1,384,000 of expenditures during the fiscal year. The bulk of that was grant-funded appropriations where we had a funding source coming through grants. That equaled $910,000. Prior-year purchase order carryovers for items that we had ordered but not received as the end of the fiscal year, $238,000. Increases in animal control costs, just under $44,000. Strike team overtime where we get reimbursed from the state, which adds to our fire department overtime costs, $185,000, and other items totaling about $6,500, bringing the total final budgeted expenditures up to $35.7 million at the end of the year. And at the end of the fiscal year, we've only spent of that total $34.1 million, leaving us under budget by approximately $1.6 million. The savings did include $303,000 encumbrance carryovers and $544,000 in grant funds which will carry over to the next fiscal year. So, in reality, when you look at the real data that carries over, the real savings, if you will, in expenditures is more like $769,000. We didn't really have $1.6 million in savings. It's about $769,000 because those carryover amounts will be expended in the current 1314 fiscal year. Still a very significant savings for us. The savings did occur, as has been the past and previous years, in almost all departments and across almost all line items of the budget. I'll show you a breakdown of the savings by department and by line item of the budget in later slides. And we did, in the fiscal year, continue to maintain an amount in excess of the city's 10% reserve requirement within the general fund, as far as our undesignated unrestricted fund balance within the general fund, and that's per city council policy direction. To show a status of the Economic Stabilization Reserve Fund, I refer to it often in my reports as the ESR, just an acronym for the initials Economic Stabilization Reserve Fund. The city ended the 1213 fiscal year with a balance in the ESR that was higher than anticipated even during the budget preparation time for fiscal year 1314. When we were putting together the current year budget, we thought that we would use about $609,000 of the ESR, and when we actually ended the year, it ended up being $347,000, which was about $262,000 less than what we originally had projected. I reviewed the data that we had put together at budget time to see where we were off and how come we had additional savings, if you will, and not as much spent. And we had building permit revenues of about $51,000 more than we projected, hotel motel surcharge revenues of $36,000 more, and recreation program revenues of $38,000 more than what we had originally projected. This is kind of a long schedule, but I like to show where the funds came from and how they've been used from the Economic Stabilization Reserve Fund. I know as we head back into negotiations with our bargaining units, I like to make this information available for anyone that's interested in it, or if anyone has any questions, I encourage folks to call me and ask questions. I want everyone to be as informed as possible. It shows the original balance of $2.3 million when it was initially funded, what we used for operations during a three-year period, how we replenished it at the beginning of the three years of the bargaining unit agreements that we have in place now that end at the end of 1314, and how much we've used through fiscal year 1213 with the balance available for carryover that is shown in the city's audited financial statements of a little over $3.9 million. The top 10 general fund revenues really make up the lion's share of the city's revenues. I've got a slide for eight of the top 10 revenues that show on a budget compared to actual basis how we ended the year. And the way it's set up is if the line is completely yellow and goes all the way over to the 100% mark, here, we made 100% of what our budgeted revenues were. If it goes beyond, like some of these do, we achieved more than 100% of our revenues. In other words, we exceeded our budget. If you still see blue here, we didn't quite make it. We're a little bit short. And just reviewing these four items with you, property tax revenues exceeded budget expectations by $515,000 or 5.3% of the amount budgeted. This was attributable to the city receiving the amount previously withheld for the property tax administration fees from Sutter County. Those are now given back to cities. We lost out on them one year, but we receive those now, so that's built back into our actual receipts, and now it's built back into budget for future years. Additionally, for fiscal year 1213, we budgeted for a 3.5% decline in property taxes, and in reality, they only went down 2.2%. So, that caused us to receive more than what we had originally budgeted. Sales tax, including Proposition 172 sales tax share and the Master Tax Exchange Agreement payments to Sutter County, ended the year $597,000 or 5.9% more than budgeted. We had projected a modest increase of only 2% for fiscal year 1213. Instead, the average increase for the fiscal year averaging out the quarter-to-quarter changes was 3.55% increase on a cash basis. Sales tax revenue continues to be highly volatile and very difficult to project. At the beginning of the decline, finance couldn't keep up with the decreases that we were seeing, and then we started seeing some positive quarters, and most recently, we've had a couple of down quarters. So, it makes it really tough to predict on an ongoing basis. Therefore, we take the information as it comes and pass it along just as quick as we get it and share it with the city council, the employees, and put it out on the city's website and make it available to the public. Franchise fees were $55,600 more than budgeted and $13,500 more than the previous year. This increase was due to higher-than-anticipated receipts, which is really good news from the city's standpoint because the prior-year receipts were inflated from a one-time payment from PG&E of $35,000. So, the fact that even though receipts were $13,500 more, that's really good that it was even more than the previous year when the previous year was already inflated. Business licenses were 1.7% less than budgeted or $13,000 less than budgeted, but $35,700 more than the previous year. So, what that means is that we missed the budget mark, but yet they were still increasing compared to the previous year. Recreation revenues were $54,800 less than budgeted or 4.5% down and $48,900 less than the previous year. But they also save on the cost side. When they don't receive the revenues, they don't run the program, so we don't incur the costs on recreation programs. Hotel motel surcharge revenues were $73,500 more than budgeted and $2900 more than the previous year. This increase is attributable to both an increase in receipts as gross receipts by the hotels increased and additionally due to one-time payments for catch-up of delinquent payments for a couple of the hotels. Building permit revenues, as I mentioned, were $40,900 more than budgeted and $49,900 more than the previous year, and that was due to four large building permits which came in during the last portion of the fiscal year during May and June that were unanticipated when budget projections were put together. This shows you the historical property tax receipts for the city, going back to fiscal year '06-'07. It's shown in millions of dollars with the dollar amount received for each fiscal year listed in the middle of the bar chart. Shows you that revenues peaked in fiscal year '07-'08 and continued downward at a steady decline until fiscal year 1213, when they bounced up slightly. And it looks like, from the reports I received from HGL based on housing sale prices, we're definitely into an upward trend now. It's a modest increase, but nonetheless, it's an increase. So, I think good news will be coming in the next couple of years. We've got a little bit of time lag in between when housing values go up, when they resell, and even some of them are resold at a lesser value than where they've been in the past. But nonetheless, it is an increase based upon Prop 8 reassessments that we currently have. So, I expect property tax will be rebounding and increasing slightly in future years, but at least it's gone up in fiscal year 1213 compared to what it was in previous years. This is a similar slide for sales tax, and it shows you seven years' worth of data also on sales tax where revenues declined significantly for several years and then began increasing again in fiscal year 1011, 1112, and 1213. The interesting thing here is looking back a little further, we peaked in sales tax in fiscal year '05-'06 at $11.1 million. We're still down from the peak, but only by about $300,000 now.
And Robin, that should continue to increase with John L. Sullivan Car Dealership moving up and opening up this year, as well as Yuba City Toyota and a few of the other new stores, correct?
Yes, I agree. We get projections from our consultant that does our sales tax audits. We tell them what we have coming online, and then they predict what that will generate for us, and we build that into our projections. We do it very conservatively, of course, but nonetheless, we do take that into consideration.
Great, thank you.
This is a summary of all the increases and decreases in sales tax on a cash basis compared to the same quarter of the previous fiscal year. So, looking at fiscal year 1213, for example, I mentioned that we had an average increase of 3.55% for the year. That is merely an average of these numbers here. And you can see from looking at them why it's difficult to predict. Just when I think we've turned the corner and things are looking good for us, we have the decline of a half a percentage. Okay, that's not the best news, but it's not real bad. And then the next quarter, I say, "What? Where did that come from?" And then we wait till we get our sales tax audit to see if it's different on a cash basis versus an adjusted basis, if you will. And of course, it always is. And this is a summary comparing side-by-side the cash basis to the adjusted basis. And the way I try to explain this to people is I look at the cash basis because that's what I can use to pay employees and vendors. It's money in the bank that the state deposits for us. But the adjusted basis is when all the audits and the mispayments, the overpayments, all catch up with the reporting, and that's at the end of the day what we will eventually end up with after all the IOUs and UOMe's even out. So, I definitely like to look at that and distribute that, too. And when you do, that has been more level and steady, more reliable, but it's not money in the bank that I can use to pay employees or vendors. I think it's important, though, to present both sides of that equation, if you will. Looking at the general fund expenditures, 97.8% of budgeted amounts for salary and benefits were spent at the end of the year. This is down from fiscal year 1112 when we spent $98.7. I look at these percentages. It doesn't sound like a lot, but when you look at the city's total salary and benefits, it really does add up. And comparing that back to fiscal year 1011, we had spent 97.9%. So, this year mirrors two years ago much more, so we had a little more in savings of our budget amount this year. Even at 97.8%, it seems like we spent almost all of our budget, but because it's such a big number, that 2.2% savings really does mean a lot and amounts to about $600,000 in savings for us. 91.2% of budgeted amounts for materials, supplies, and services were spent. The 8.8% which wasn't spent amounts to about $652,000. And as I mentioned previously, expenditures were under budget by about $1.6 million. But of that, take into consideration that we have to account for the outstanding purchase orders that we have to carry over and outstanding grant carryover. So, again, at the end of the day, the true savings is about $769,000, which is still pretty substantial. I like to show you this graph, even though it's kind of ugly with all the squiggly lines. The bright green line, whoops, find my slide again.
Quick report.
Sorry about that. I don't mind going on fast forward, but that was a little fast. The bright green line represents the salary and benefits as a percentage of the total budget. So, the top bar there being 100%, it shows you from year to year over a period of time how much the city has spent of our salary and benefits. The gold-colored line is the city's total budget, which falls in line more with the salaries and benefits because that's about 80% of the city's expenditures as far as how much we've spent of the budget total citywide. And then the yellow line is the material supplies and services, which does tend to vary more from year to year. You can see when we really, really tightened down and really did without. I think we were suffering so much so that we had to continue providing services to citizens and started using more as a percentage-wise. Plus, we cut the budgets to the bare bones, and once we cut the budgets to the bare bones, people spent closer to 90% to 95% of their budget because they didn't have as much budget left to use. So, I think that that number's a true reflection of that also. It's definitely a sign of the times. Departments have had to become very frugal because finance has not allowed any increases to the material supplies and services budgets for the last five years. We've had folks move things from one line item to another where they needed it, but they had to find an offset somewhere in order to get something increased. This is the expenditure savings on a department basis, department by department, and I'd like to address a couple of departments. The city attorney's budget, you can see, is over budget by $54,000, and I would like to acknowledge that that is not based on our city attorney. It's for personnel, professional services attorneys that the city's hired outside of our city attorney contract, so more specialized services that are specific in nature that we needed. And additionally, the fire department is over budget. They warned administration and finance halfway through the year that they were going to go over budget due to their constant staffing model and that they needed to have overtime in order to staff their shifts accordingly due to a variety of different medical reasons where they had people out for one reason or another. That was a variety of reasons, but it heavily impacted their salary and benefits due to overtime because of backfilling for covering shifts. This is a line item detail, and I have to give this to you on two slides. It's summary level, believe it or not, compared to what the city has in our expenditure accounts, but it shows you the salary and benefit savings, for example, on a citywide basis, a little over $600,000, heat and power, et cetera, et cetera. And the line items, which I would say where we're over as a city, over budget, are kind of beyond the department's control, like postage and freight. In finance, I send out the utility bills no matter what. I don't increase my budget because postage goes up. I have to find it someplace else by cutting somewhere else and saving money. And that's what you're seeing here in these line items. With water, charging ourselves for city water services, you're seeing the impact of that.
Robin, I have a question. Could we go ahead? Just when you mentioned on the postage, and obviously postage is going to go up again here coming up, and I know for those of us that do online banking, it always pops up some of the vendors, "Would you like to get your bill on online banking?" You can go yes or no. And I've never seen that from the city of Yuba City pop up on my account. I guess I should get that. But it shouldn't be popping up where you can try to get as many people off of the hard copy and put them on the online stuff. Is that something that you looked at?
We're looking at that. We've been evaluating proposals that we requested from vendors late last fall and going through and contacting all of their references. We've evaluated not only that, but we want the ability to do interactive voice response payments. We want to be able to email bills to customers. So, we're looking at a variety of things and looking at bringing that to council in probably the first part of March. So, we're in the process of evaluating that. When I came back from vacation, I was advised by my staff that they have a top vendor that they are going to come discuss with me later this week. So, I'm really excited that that's been moving forward. They've done a great job in looking at all the angles because unless you ask the right questions, you're not sure what you're getting yourself into, and there's unfortunately a cost for everything. The savings is in staff time, but I don't anticipate getting rid of any staff. So, I anticipate that there will be efficiencies and better customer service for our customers, but increased costs coming along with it.
Because I know that Darren's working on an app for the city of Yuba City, which should be rolling out here in March, so be able to tie a lot of that stuff with the mayor.
My question goes right along with this, and I know that there's a lot of moving parts, and we've discussed this before as far as is doing more electronic billing, but I think that to keep in mind when we're selecting a vendor to handle this for us, one, like you mentioned, that there is cost for that also. But in light of what's happened with Target and other companies with the breach of security and so on, it's really important to have a third party that handles all of this, that handles the compliance things, and so we're not storing people's personal credit card information and banking information. And so, there's a lot of moving pieces to this. It's not just as simple as just sending out an email and say, "Here, you take, here's your bill," and so on. So, appreciate all that you're doing to bring this forward to us.
Thank you, and I can't take credit for that. It's been entirely my staff. They've been coordinating it and working together. That's one of the things that Devon, our IT manager, and Spencer, our finance manager, have been working on, making sure that whomever we go with is PCI compliant. And sorry to get into too much detail away from the finances, but it is good for you to know that this is coming forward to you in the near future. And of the four companies that we got proposals from, one of them was not PCI compliant. So, we immediately said, "Can't do business with this one" because that's a concern of ours The city's retirement costs, this is a comparison of our retirement costs over time, and this gives the impression that the retirement costs actually went down in fiscal year 910. That is not actually entirely true. It went down because we implemented furlough programs and we reduced our staffing. We'd gone through and cut all the positions that we could possibly cut out of the budget, so we did have some savings, and now it's on the upswing as our PERS rates go up. And I relabeled this slide Retirement Comparison because it includes not only what we pay to CalPERS for a retirement program, but also the debt service on the city's pension obligation bonds. And this is a summary of the city's revenue and expenditures compared side-by-side over time, with the revenues showing up in blue and the expenditures showing up in gold. Through fiscal year '07-'08, we had a surplus. We weren't, we were taking in more than what we were spending. And beginning in '08-'09, that's when we started deficit spending to carry ourselves through. Up here on the top, I show ESR with the amounts. That's the amount of our deficit spending each year. So, it hasn't been as significant as what we once projected because of the fact that our revenues have started recovering through sales tax increases, and we've held the line on vacant positions. And in some cases, like with the police department, we haven't been able to fill them fast enough. We've had vacancies that we've backfilled with overtime, but it hasn't caused us, we're not spending all of our budget because of Moving into the city's water utility, this is a summary at the highest level of the budgeted amount and the actual results of the operations for the water utility. Operating revenues came in at 111% of the amount budgeted. This is 1.1 million larger than what we anticipated and is attributable to two items. It's about $700,000 related to billing revenues in excess of what we had projected and budgeted, and also a $400,000 one-time revenue. I'll get into the details of that in just a minute, but the $700,000 is actual billing revenues more than what we budgeted. And looking at that, our base monthly charge now includes 15 units of water instead of the previously allowed amount of 16 units when we incorporated our new rate model a couple of years ago that was approved. In addition, the rate structure had step increases over several years, so we have those revenues increasing as part of our model, and we anticipated that. But we've also had a higher quantity of water being sold to customers, including ourselves, which is why we were over budget, and we went back and installed the water wells at the city's parks. So, that'll help us reduce our costs for using irrigation wells instead of paying ourselves based upon our rate schedule that we have in place. That generated the additional $700,000 in water revenues. In addition, we received $402,000 when we refunded the water certificates of participation. We had a guaranteed investment contract on our previous reserve fund at a very high yielding rate of return. When we refunded those bonds, it released our reserve fund, but in order to get out of that guaranteed investment contract where they had guaranteed us a very good rate of return on our reserve money, they had to pay us a premium. That resulted in us receiving a one-time payment of $402,000, and that's built into these revenues, also helping to increase revenues more than budgeted because we didn't know that that was going to happen when we put together the budget. And as far as operating expenditures, they ended the year at 89.4% of the budgeted amounts or $752,000 less than budgeted. I like to compare that to the previous year just to see how we're doing, if we're spending more or spending less. And the fiscal year 1213 total expenditures were $264,000 less than what they were in the prior year for the This is a summary of the water fund debt coverage ratio, where we covenant to our bondholders that we will maintain a certain ratio in order to cover our debt service payments. It has to be 1.2 or 120% or we will raise rates. The way the calculation is done, we take our total revenues, including our capital connection fee revenues, subtract our operating expenditures, and get net operating revenues. This amount is then divided by the total debt service amount to get a ratio, and that must equal 1.2 or 120%. The water fund has consistently maintained a ratio of just under 1.8% for the last three years. The fiscal year adopted 1314 budget shows a ratio of 1.36%. I did it again. Oh, Terrell, can you get me back in there? 18, I think. Thank you, Terrell. Sorry about that. I won't point anymore. That's when I do that. 1.36%, and I'm not concerned about that because the water fund has never spent all of its budget. I know that we will do better than the 1.36%. So, at the end of the year, I'll be back to tell you next year how good it was, much better than the 1.36%. On the wastewater side, this is a summary of the budget versus actual revenues and expenditures for it. The operating revenues ended the year at 102% of the amount budgeted with actual revenues being $215,000 more than what we budgeted. Capital connection fee revenues were $112,000. Capital connection fee revenues were 112% of the amount budgeted or 52,500 higher than what we budgeted. Expenditures were only at 91% of the amounts budgeted. Again, an example that the department did not fully expend its entire budget. The savings was 700, just shy of 730,000 less than the amount budgeted. And in looking at that and comparing it to the previous year for fiscal year end 11-12, we actually spent 51,000 more in 12-13 than we did in 11-12, which isn't really a concern that for an operation this size, it's a modest increase. And this is a similar slide to what I showed you on the water fund. As far as the wastewater fund debt coverage ratio, it has fluctuated more than the water fund. It hasn't been as consistent. In fiscal year 10-11, it was at 2.09. Then it dropped to 1.63, and then in 12-13, it's back up to 2.26. In 10-11, it dropped due to higher expenditures and without having the additional revenues at that time that we're now seeing in 12-13. In fiscal year 13-14, it's at 1.57, again on a budgeted basis. I anticipate we'll do much better than that by the end of the year.
Robyn, can I ask you just a quick question? I mean, is there some information on here that we need to look at? Because we've got all this information that we're looking at right in front of us.
It's the bottom line.
Okay, so instead of repeating it, I know because we've got this report, we've got the next report, and I don't want to move this thing along. There we go, perfect. Any questions from council members on Robyn's report?
Thank you for a complete and fabulous report, and I'd be looking forward to hearing the next one.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, Robyn, because I know there's a lot of detailed information that goes into this as far as ratios and numbers and debt coverages and budgets and stuff. And it's nice to know that the city is actually on good financial, solid ground, and not only looking at historic, but looking at future forecast numbers as well. So thank you very, very much.
My pleasure, and I will be back to city council, I'll warn you now, in February with the mid-year report for fiscal year 13-14. It won't be as long as this one was because I have a lot more data to give you at fiscal year end. The audit report, if you think that my report is long, this one's even longer, so.
I think that's the one we've got hard copies of.
Yes. Uh-huh. And we won't get into that much detail with you tonight on that, on this audit report because it really is a very detailed audit report of everything that I just gave you in 22 slides. So for what that's worth.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and that was for note and file.
Yes, we can move on to the next.
The next item before almost finishing for our students of River Valley, it's a wonderful lesson you're getting of numbers and ratios and all that, just kind of what you guys had expected. We've got, yeah, you're just awake. We're almost there.
Two hours.
Yeah.